Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Pacifica for May 16, 2016. Could we have our roll call, please?
Commissioner Behringer.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Chair Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Present.
Vice Chair Nebelen is absent.
Thank you, sir. And for a salute to the flag, we have Commissioner Campbell. You want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, we have an order of agenda. Commissioner Clifford.
I move to approve the order of agenda.
Commissioner Evans.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Let's see, on to the minutes. Are we able to move on these minutes?
Yes.
Great. So we've got the meeting of April 4, 2016. Commissioner Evans.
I move we approve the minutes for the April 4, 2016, meeting.
Great. Commissioner, hmm, I don't think you can do that, Tom. So we've got, who else? Commissioner Campbell.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second. Please vote.
I wanted to make a correction. I know I can't vote on this, but I did speak at that particular meeting and there was a correction that needed to be made.
My apologies. I'm sorry. Let's see, can we retract that vote? Commissioner Clifford, please proceed with your correction.
Okay. On page eight of eighteen, you go down to Tom Clifford, and you go down three-quarters of the way. Let's see, it starts in, he stated that brought, he stated that brought up the issue of building, housing, and hotels and bungalows. Adding that you have to have it all phased in so that not to, and it says land up, and I'm pretty sure I said end up.
Okay. So noted, are we clear, are we clear on the correction? Okay. So could we have a motion on the April 4 minutes as reflecting the correction by Tom Clifford? Commissioner Evans.
I will move to approve the minutes of April 4 with the corrections by Tom Clifford.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I'll second.
Great. Please vote. And that passes four to zero. Okay. Moving on to the May 2, 2016, minutes. We had, see, Commissioner, oh, so Commissioner Behringer.
Yes.
Yes.
I have a minor correction, as I noted when I read the minutes. My name is spelled B-A-R, not B-E-R. Because as I often say, if I was from the wine family, I probably wouldn't be here. I love all you guys, but I probably wouldn't be here. That occurs, I think, in three separate areas, just a minor clerical correction.
Great. Thank you for that. And Commissioner Clifford, do you have comments, too?
Yes, I do have something. On page two of four, down at the bottom, I got a promotion. They called me Councilmember Clifford, and I am, I am not Councilmember Clifford. I am Commissioner Clifford.
This is, this is kind of amusing here. Okay. All right. Do we have, I see some more lights. Do we have more corrections, or we're all good here? Okay. So we've got the May 2 minutes reflecting the corrections by Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner Behringer. Commissioner Evans, do you have a motion?
I move that we approve the May 2 minutes with the corrections mentioned.
Great. Commissioner Behringer.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I will be abstaining since I wasn't here.
Okay. So reflected, please vote. And that passes, one, two, three, four, five, five to zero. Great. Moving on to the city council meeting, do we have a need for a designation of liaison?
No, we don't.
Great. Thank you very much. And moving on to oral communications, this portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. And do we have any, any cards? We do not have cards. So, moving on to the public hearing, we've got one item, text amendment, TA 104-16. The City of Pacifica is proposing amendments to Title IX, Chapter Four, Article 10 of the municipal code to allow massage establishments as a permitted use in certain commercial districts subject to the compliance with licensing regulations administered by the Pacifica Police Department. The proposed action is to adopt the resolution initiating the amendment and recommending that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance. Could we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Tina Wermeyer, planning director. On February 8, the city council considered introduction of an ordinance enacting new licensing standards for massage businesses. And in the course of considering that action, the city council directed staff to make revisions to the licensing ordinance in order to prevent certain unlawful activities while not precluding or creating an onerous process for licensed therapists that provide a valuable service to the community. In the course of implementing council's direction, staff noted that a use permit is currently required for massage establishments in commercial districts, which is redundant with the licensing requirements that are in place currently and the licensing requirements that are proposed to be amended. As such, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment that the Planning Commission is being asked to act on would remove the use permit requirement and instead reference the massage licensing requirements. In determining to make this recommendation, staff reviewed the most recent planning department application files available for massage businesses, and in both cases, the conditions of approval referenced the police department licensing requirements, and there were no other substantive issues raised. Therefore, staff feels confident that removing the use permit requirement and relying on the licensing requirements would satisfy council's direction and would be more supportive of local businesses that are coming to town. The revised draft massage business ordinance was provided for the commission's reference. It contains provisions addressing state certification requirements, registration requirements for owners, employees, and contractors, operating requirements addressing hours of operation, sanitation, and safety. And the commission does not need to act on this ordinance since it's not in the zoning section of the municipal code. So I wanted to mention that Captain Spanheimer is here from the police department in case there are any specific questions about how licensing is implemented in the city. And the recommended action is to adopt the resolution of intent and recommend that the city council adopt the ordinance relating to permitted and conditional uses in the C1 neighborhood commercial district. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
So what was council trying to accomplish with this direction?
Council was focused on the licensing revisions, the revisions to the licensing ordinance. And I think that they were acknowledging that human trafficking and such activities are an issue, and they wanted to continue to have stringent licensing requirements that would prohibit that, that kind of activity, of course, but at the same time, not be so, I guess draconian, in the licensing requirement so that legitimate practitioners are not, I guess, put through the wringer, you know, just to be able to practice within the City of Pacifica. So they weren't actually focused on the use permit. I don't think that was even brought up. And so, you know, staff getting together afterwards, working with the police department, we noted that there was reference to this use permit requirement. We thought, you know, that again is, is, I think, I think if you look back historically, cities in general have used their land use power to try to prevent some of those illicit activities from happening. That's kind of not become best practice anymore. It's been the licensing standards, and so we just kind of have this antiquated section of our code, and I, and we think that it's appropriate to remove it as long as the licensing requirements are met.
Are the licensing requirements something that, are we basically staying unchanged with regard to requirements in the city for these types of establishments?
I can let Captain Spanheimer respond to that. I know that the ordinance is revised to be more clear. I don't, and I'll let him speak to whether or not it's been stringent or less stringent.
Great. Thank you. Hi, Captain.
Good evening, Chairperson Gordon, or Commissioner, sorry. Captain Joe Spanheimer with the police department, representing Chief Dan Stidle. And the question was?
At the, it seems like council was asking for a bit more oversight or assurances that human trafficking wasn't going to be occurring in some of these establishments in town, and so I'm wondering what has been done to accomplish that purpose?
Okay. So the new proposed ordinance, I feel in reading, it's much more smooth, it streamlines the process. It enables us to, it's less onerous because the existing California Massage Therapy Council approved masseuses will continue that. Any new masseuses or massage business owners will be CAMTC certified. There are a handful that will be essentially grandfathered in under the old licensing. The, the ordinance is very clear on the rooms, the lighting, how much visibility there must be from the street, what can be touched, what cannot be touched, the proper clothing that the masseuses are supposed to wear. So it is, it is pretty clear cut. And in regards to any human trafficking that may be done, we are an active part of a county task force that does engage in investigations and stings regarding human trafficking, and we will routinely inspect massage parlors. This ordinance does enable us to look at the records, which they may, must maintain for two years. We can go ahead and do, do spot inspections. And if any businesses are, are in question, we have done in the past, as recently as a week ago, done our own sting operations to make sure they are in compliance with all the state laws and municipal codes.
If I could add to that, so if you think about the nexus findings that, that we commonly need to make in the, in the projects that we review, stuff like reviewing their books, the registering driver's license, et cetera, that just isn't a land use function. It just, we, putting a condition of approval like that on a project isn't typically what this body does, and I think maybe there could be a nexus argument there. And, but when you have the licensing in a separate section of the code, the city is very much, you know, within its police power to, to, to require all of that, to annually review those, those registrations, to go in and do an inspection annually. So it's like, it's sort of like we're not really equipped to do that, right? And the licensing provisions are. So it's more appropriate than through the land use authority.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. I noticed on the, it says the adoption of the proposed zoning revisions would save the future massage businesses an estimated $3,000. What was the previous, I mean, what will be the, the change in that? Will they overall save them $3,000, or are they going to add a different fee for the business license, or how does that?
I don't know what the licensing fee is, but this was just referring to the use permit and ballpark.
On, on the planning side, yes. Captain, is there a different cost for the business license, or?
I can't comment as far as the business license itself goes. The, the fee that we have charged at the police department's been, been unchanged for the last couple of years, so that hasn't, has not increased.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great. So it sounds like we're, just for clarification, it sounds like we're talking about a net change of $3,000 less, since the use permit's not going to be?
Yes.
Required. Okay. Commissioner Behringer.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. In, in reading through the materials, I guess the thing that came to my mind wasn't so much the ability of, of Captain Spanheimer and his group to, to adequately vet the people that are going to be operating there on an ongoing basis, but I was looking at it more from a land use standpoint, and in certain types of usages, when you look at the types of usages that require a conditional use permit as opposed to a permitted use or a by right use, there's a reason for that, and it's usually because of the intensity of the type of use that they have. So my question, in a roundabout way, is if we're talking about an in-line facility in an existing shopping center, for example, to me, I can see this working really efficiently, or I could see some issues, perhaps could be if, if one of the operators wanted to construct a freestanding location. And how would the Planning Commission deal with that in terms of making sure that the development was appropriate, that operationally it worked from a parking ingress egress? I noticed on one of the conditional use letters that, that you sent out, you required them to have a permanent sign as opposed to a banner. I'm concerned about how those types of issues would be handled with this new ordinance.
So if a new, there's new construction involved, there'd likely be a site development permit, for example, that's required for that new construction in a commercial district?
So you would take into consideration the use anticipated for the new building, even though it's in a C1 district, I'll use that as an example, you would take into consideration that it is a massage facility and that it has certain, I couldn't tell whether you broke out specific parking requirements for that type of use, like you would for a restaurant or retail or something like that, but I assume it's buried in there somewhere.
We would consider that type of, the issues related to site development, so the number of parking spaces.
Right.
Setbacks, et cetera.
Okay.
And so it's, that is an appropriately land use area of the code, and so it would require at least a site development permit, or perhaps a coastal development permit if it's brand new construction.
So someone, either staff or us, would have an opportunity to look at that and comment on it.
Yes.
Oh, I have one other question. I'll remember it in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I know what it was. It was sequencing. Do you start the process after he's already approved the applicant, or how does that work mechanically?
For a new, new construction? It would, it would be through the planning department first.
And then it would go to the police department for the actual issuance of the operating permit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Clifford.
My question has already been answered. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Campbell.
Does the public lose any rights to comment or anything like that with the loss of the use permit requirement?
Um, so, yeah, so there wouldn't be a use permit required for a new massage establishment. And so as far as I read through the licensing requirements, there is no public notice either. So, so, yeah, so they, so they wouldn't have the ability to comment. And I guess the significance of that would depend on your point of view. It, it seems like a pretty benign use to me, but...
Now, if you, if you do the research on San Francisco's efforts to address these, this issue, it's been, there's been a robust discussion out there as to, it's, it's basically what I understand, it's, it's whack-a-mole. It's you, the illicit business is policed, they'll put someone into, in a law enforcement situation, and then another owner comes in, and since it's the same use, it just keeps going and going and going, and the neighborhoods can't get any traction as far as on a land use level, maybe moving that type of use out of their neighborhoods. So that, that seemed to be a big concern in San Francisco. I'm wondering if that's different here?
I believe there's some provisions in the lights, the proposed licensing ordinance regarding if it, if it, either the operator has been cited, or if the location has had problems, that they would not be licensed again.
And Captain Spanheimer, you want to expand on that?
The chief of police has, has discretion as far as renewal goes, and I believe that is on annual basis. And I can comment on from some past experience regarding enforcement and massage parlors. You know, we used to have, I wouldn't say a problem here in City of Pacifica, but that was many years ago. We conducted several enforcement operations, and we, we have really not experienced a problem with that issue in, in a number of years. So we've been very fortunate. And again, we are part of the, the human trafficking task force, so we, we're in constant contact with our neighbors, and they've had much more problems along, you know, the El Camino corridor, and we're fortunate that we have not.
Thank you.
Okay. I am not seeing any more lights from commissioners. By the way, all very good questions. Thanks for the, generating the discussion. Commissioner Campbell, yeah?
One more quick question, just a Captain Spanheimer. Would you have any objection if we kept the use permit? Would that get in your way?
I don't believe it would impede us any. It does, it does lengthen the, you know, the process that a, you know, a future business owner may, may have to, you know, go through. So, again, you know, that may afford the public an opportunity to, to speak on the topic. However, as far as the law enforcement perspective goes, you know, it would lengthen the process a little bit, but as far as our licensing and the permitting and such, I don't think that would change significantly.
Thank you.
I guess I'll ask a question, following up on Commissioner Campbell's question. So the, what's the purpose of trying to eliminate the, the use permit in this context? Is there, is there, are we aiming at trying to sort of encourage entrepreneurship, or are we trying to, like, lower the burdens? Has this been an issue that's been raised by masseuses or potential masseuses? Or what's, what's driving the desire to?
What, what was driving this initially is making the application or the permitting process less onerous. And right now, it's two-part. It's the licensing as well as a use permit for, for a new establishment. And in looking at what was being reviewed with the use permits, it was no different than what, and actually maybe not even quite as stringent as what the licensing already does. So it was redundant. And so it was nothing more than, I think, I think just trying to improve efficiencies.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then if I could get to, get to also respond to Commissioner Campbell, if you're looking at the proposed licensing ordinance, on the bottom of page seven, it does discuss that there would be, no reapplication will be accepted within one year after an application or renewal is denied, or certificate revoked. And then going on to the next page, city registration certificates may not be issued to massage businesses seeking to operate at a particular location if another business was operating at that particular location and was suspended, if they received a notice of suspension, et cetera. I'm just kind of skimming it, but, but there is provisions there to not keep reissuing the permit if there's, there's problems.
All right. To, and if I can, yeah, I'm just wondering if that means that when they, when they refer to that massage business, that's that limited liability company, or that, you know, incorporated business?
Moving around town.
And then they just change a name and come in, and, and it's, the same use is there so they can just reincorporate into a different use? But my other question was to kind of get, just to narrow in a little bit more on, on Chair Gordon's point, was have there been complaints from the massage community businesses that are, that is driving this, or was it a matter of staff saw this and just wanted to, kind of saw the opportunity to clean it up?
It was staff driven.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. So if I understand this correctly, then there will be no process at all for the public's knowledge prior to a business starting, even within their neighborhood? And there's no recourse for them to speak to anyone about this? Is this correct?
So I, I wanted to maybe clarify your question and answer it clearly. So if you have a commercial, a neighborhood, commercial district in your neighborhood, and it's a permitted use, provided, you know, the commission makes this recommendation and council approves it, then there would be no noticing. I do want to point out that you can already do massage in your home, provided you follow the home occupation requirements, which does include a limited noticing. So that, that won't change.
Right. But there's no recourse for the public, like, say, when a dog grooming business comes before us, there's actual opportunity for the public to speak in favor or against this, correct?
There's a use permit.
Yes.
Yes, there would be opportunity.
But with this new, with this new change, there would not be, and thus no option opportunity for the public to speak one way or the other about this, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Clifford.
I want to go back to Commissioner Campbell's question about there being no line of masseuses wanting to open a business. And then the most recent ones you gave us were 2004, which is 12 years ago. So it doesn't, it's almost like we're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist, if there's not a bunch of people saying, oh, we want to open our business up. We're not holding anybody up from getting a business license at this point because they aren't making the applications. So I just, is that correct?
That's correct. I am not aware of anybody who's been, who's not come to town because of the use, use permit requirement, in the limited time that I've been here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clifford, Commissioner Campbell.
I think that Commissioner Evans got to my question, I was, that's what I was, my concern was, or, and let me know if it is a concern, that you could open up a, a business in a residential home, and, an actual business, and put this, put the signs up and everything without public notice, but that's, no.
That's, that's not...
No. Okay. So that, it doesn't go that far.
That won't change. The home occupation provisions aren't changing.
Okay. Great.
But I, I guess I'd like to point out that if, if, if we did see a use permit for a massage establishment, and there's probably a lot of things that I'm not considering, but if the, if you feel that the main potential concern is more, are things that would be addressed with the licensing and are not land use issues, there's not much that this commission could do about the posed public comments anyways. So if somebody came here and said, well, I would like you to do a background check on everybody who works there, that's not this commission's purview. That's actually what's going to happen through, through the licensing requirements. So I, just something for you to think about and consider. It's, there, I'm having a hard time envisioning what the actual land use strictly concerns would be of people who would be noticed for a use permit. Not saying that they're not there, I'm just not thinking about it.
And I think it could be signage, parking.
Yeah, signage, they still have to comply with the...
Neighborhood character.
Mm-hmm.
Design guidelines, things of that nature.
It'd still need to comply with the sign program, or sign, sign program if that shopping center had a sign program and a sign code. And parking standards.
Great discussion. Commissioner Behringer.
Yeah, I have one final question. What about hours of operation? Can we limit those as a, as a part of this process? Or is that?
Hours of operation, I believe, are addressed in the licensing.
Yes.
They're controlled by the PD, then?
Yes.
So what are the normal hours of operation, Captain?
I do know closing at 9:00 PM is the final. It even specifies you may start a massage at 9:00, it ends at 9:00 PM. So we shall not go beyond that. The opening hours, I would have to flip through the, the proposal here.
I assume seven days a week is permitted, but there's a hard stop at 9:00 PM. I assume seven days a week is permitted, but there's a hard stop at 9:00 PM every night?
The, I'm sorry, Commissioner, the opening, it shall be between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM.
Okay. And that in seven days a week is permitted?
I don't see anything referring to the days it may be open for business.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If I may, just to address the concern about the whack-a-mole type issue that might be happening to the north of us, part of that licensing process is live scan, and once we do that process, we get notified automatically of any subsequent arrests. So if we've live scanned that person, and they go somewhere else, there's an arrest at a different massage parlor, some other city, we still get notified of that. So if they are live scanned, licensed here, we will be notified of any law violations.
Thank you for that. So if, I'm going to try to articulate what I'm hearing and sort of make it a concise question. It sounds like what the issue is, are there issues that the public could raise regarding a massage establishment, you know, permitting for a massage establishment, that would not be covered in the licensing regulations, but would be within our jurisdiction to address? That would be of concern to the public? Because if so, then it sounds like we're losing something that's, we'd be losing something that's potentially worthwhile. Is that clear? Is that kind of summing up where you guys are kind of headed, some of you?
Just conferring here, the only thing that readily comes to our mind is if there partitioning a tenant space into very small treatment rooms, thereby potentially creating a higher parking standard than, or requirement than was contemplated.
Mm-hmm. I remember Commissioner Campbell, you listed some things that you thought would fall within, fall outside the licensing rules, but would still be within our jurisdiction.
I think it was signage. You mentioned that the signage ordinance would have to be followed, although I'm a little unclear on whether that could be something that we could look at.
Sure.
So it seems like that would be something worthwhile. That's probably actually a fairly big deal in this town. And then also parking, and there's probably some other imagined discretionary things we could, landscaping, the usual planning issues that we've got.
Yeah, some of those things, I'm not arguing with you. Some of them are more likely to come up if it was a new construction building, which you would see, and not necessarily moving into an existing tenant space.
Okay. Commissioner Behringer?
One final question, and then I'll leave you guys alone. Let's say, just hypothetically, that we approve this tonight, and it goes off into the world, and we have a bad experience, something we all missed, that despite your best efforts, you failed. We can always amend this again, right?
Sure. So just to be clear, this would be a recommendation. So city council would actually choose to either adopt or not adopt the ordinance amendment. And certainly, you can, if there's an issue, the city council can direct us to bring this back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're done with questions for staff, and questions for you, Mr. Policeman. And so the applicant is the City of Pacifica. Normally, we'd give the applicant a chance to present, but it's, are we going to skip that?
Yeah, we just go straight to public comments if there are any.
Okay, great. So I'm going to open up the public hearing. If there's anybody out there who wants to speak on this matter, you can come up, and I don't see anybody interested. So I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Campbell?
Well, my initial reaction, and I look forward to input, is that this is kind of a solution in search of a problem. We don't have folks lining up to change this. I think we'd be losing some public input if we did change it. I don't mean to impugn the industry at all, but I just don't, I'm not seeing anyone from the public up here asking for the change. And I think that the use permit, I think, offers us an opportunity to make sure that anything that does come in, it looks good, the signs look good, and I think that's worthwhile. So that's what I've got for now.
Commissioner Clifford?
Well, I'm always in favor of more public input, and I would resist changing this just because it does cut the public out of the process, and that's where I'm at on it.
Commissioner Cooper?
Great discussion, you guys. You know, I'm just reading the code, and I'm reading the permissible uses within these districts, and you know, it seems to me that we're singling out a massage parlor or another type of service facility. Because if you read the code in the way that the permitted uses are, you could literally open a drugstore or a liquor store or whatever without any permitted use. They're acceptable within a C1 district. It's not one of those exceptions that I'm looking at here, unless it's in conjunction with a service station, or if it's in conjunction with something else. So there's many, many other uses that are permitted without any particular use permit, and it seems to me that this type of activity is just kind of going overboard. If I was to read this, the other conditional use permit would be an amusement machine arcade building. When's the last time we saw that? I mean, obviously, there's some updating that needs to be done to the code, so in my opinion, I don't see any problem with these revisions.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. I agree with you, and I'm not against this at all. I think it's a great improvement, especially by the police department, and anything to save small businesses money, I think it's a great deal too. But as my co-commissioners have stated, I'm just a little leery of backing out the possible access venue for the public to speak on a business coming within their area. And like I said, I'm not against it. I think it's a wonderful thing, but the, I'm just reluctant on pulling back the ability for the public to speak. And I know it's not on everything, but it could be one thing today, and it could be one thing tomorrow, and each little thing not noticed, and we're pulling back a lot of information from the public. So I'm cautious on that point, is all I'm trying to say. So I appreciate the input, and I like this conversation going on. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Behringer?
Thank you. I appreciate the effort to create a business-friendly environment in Pacifica, and I think that's a good thing, and we should do it. I'm a little bit concerned about why we carved this one use out without some sort of context to it, other than the council wanted it. It seems to me if there was a trade association or something that felt perhaps that the ability to operate that kind of business in our town was a cumbersome process, and stopped them from doing it, I would understand that. I also understand technically the nexus issue, that if we do have a public hearing and we do get public input, we may not be able to, let's say, you know, acquiesce to the wishes of the public if they are overwhelmingly opposed to it or whatever. I understand that. But I think getting public input is good. It's part of the process. It's sometimes painful, it's sometimes beneficial and informative. And I really think that while there would be a time delay and somewhat of a cost delay, if it's a type of a process that a businessperson can look at with a logical progression from point A to point B, I think the businesspeople understand that. I don't think it's that onerous the way it is. I just have concerns about taking out the public input. And I also have some concerns about things that we might miss. You know, we got this on Friday. I spent the whole weekend looking at it. I'm just wondering, you know, if maybe we've missed something. That's why I asked the question. We could always amend it if we so chose to approve it tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Behringer. I'm curious, and I think the representative of the police, what's, I'm sorry, what's the police person's name again?
Captain Spanheimer.
Captain Spanheimer. You mentioned that, when was the last enforcement action against a massage establishment? Are you aware of that in Pacifica?
Two weeks ago.
Well, there you go. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, okay. Thanks. Well, where I was going to go was, I was going to raise the question of, you know, on the one hand, are we in search of a solution for a problem that doesn't exist? But on the other hand, you know, to Commissioner Cooper's point, we do seem to be singling out massage, the massage business for somewhat onerous treatment, or you know, differential treatment from other uses. And I was going to use the captain's evidence as proof of the fact that massage parlors actually, you know, have a pretty clean history in Pacifica, but it sounds like I'm dead wrong.
And I think to point out that wasn't the enforcement action because they didn't have a license, not because there was anything wrong with how they were operating.
Correct. It wasn't enforcement against a massage parlor. Actually, they did not have a license to be a massage parlor. They had in the past. The business name changed. They did continue to give massages, however, did not, were not licensed for that. There was no, we did a few operations there, and everything was on the up and up. It was a legal massage, just not licensed.
So let me rephrase my poorly phrased question. When was the last time in Pacifica there was an enforcement action against a massage parlor where the issue was, I don't know, sexual business going? I don't know how to articulate that. You know what I'm saying?
Illicit activity. It's been several years, I have to actually think.
You don't have to have a date.
It's been several years. I would have to look, I'd have to go back to the station, look up in the records.
Roughly?
2010, possibly.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, 2010 is actually, in my book, I guess that's kind of in the... What's that? I think, no, I think within the last 10 years means it's kind of, it's relevant to Pacifica. So that's helpful for me. Thank you. I guess because of that, I think there is a reasonable basis to treat massage, the massage business differently, since there is a relatively recent history of that kind of activity going on. Commissioner Cooper?
I'm done, Chair. Thanks.
Okay. Well...
I just wanted to bring up something that actually Associate Planner Murdock brought up. It sounds like this may not be something that you guys want to consider, at least the people on one side of the issue, but I think there's a different way to slice this up is, I wonder if there, if you're looking at potential land use concerns, if there's a certain size massage establishment that would be permitted, such as, I don't know, four treatment rooms, or, I'm not prepared to give you a recommendation, or not, or if all of them, you'd like to continue to have a use permit. Just something to think about.
I think, as the director indicated, you know, the council's intent was to try to remove any sort of onerous permitting requirements, and I think the smaller the business, the more onerous the use permit requirement is. For a single operator, you know, as a planner, you deal with many of these operators at the counter, fewer here in Pacifica than I've encountered in other places that I've worked. But many of them are poorly resourced businesses. They're just getting out of massage therapist school. They don't have a lot of capital to get started. The money they need for security deposit and first month's, last month's rent for their commercial space, it's quite burdensome for them. So the prospect of another $3,000 to $4,000 for a use permit, it is overwhelming and may encourage them to look elsewhere, or to piggyback on another existing massage establishment. So I think, you know, for the single operator or the sole proprietor with an additional one or two therapists, that's the type of thing that I get the sense that the council was trying to support from a small business standpoint in removing unnecessary permitting requirements. So if the commission were interested in it, it's something that staff could look into and perhaps make a recommendation, and make that carve out for truly the small, independent operators that are less likely to generate neighborhood impacts, as opposed to the ones you may be familiar with in larger cities in the area where they divvy up the multiple treatment areas that tend to lend themselves to illicit activity, assuming there's that connection, which we would consult with the police department as well.
Thank you, Associate Planner Murdock. I'm interested in that. I think that's a really good compromise, and I will admit that I have a license, a massage license, from like 1960 or something like that. And I was in that position at one point in time, and it was daunting to start my own business. So yeah, I'm revealing my, do I need to recuse myself now because I'm biased? I don't know. Anyway, I'm in favor of that, looking more into that. I don't know how my fellow commissioners feel. Commissioner Campbell?
I just don't know enough about the industry, quite frankly, to do this on the fly. So I mean, this could be brought back. I wouldn't be opposed to that, and I appreciate Chair Gordon's comment just now, that there are probably, and also Planner Murdock's comments, that there's probably some small business owners that might want to find a way to do this without onerous, or, I don't, I'm not going to say onerous, it's just, you got to pay to get a license in this, to do business. I don't know if it's onerous or not, quite frankly. But I'd be willing to take a look at it, but not tonight with what we've got in front of us.
Yeah, absolutely. We wouldn't be prepared to help you out with that tonight. We would recommend that you would continue this item to date specific, perhaps the next meeting.
Agreed. Anyone want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll move that we continue the discussion on this proposal to our next scheduled meeting, which would be when? You're calculating it now as we speak.
June 6th.
We continue for further discussion on June 6th, and I assume in advance of that, we would have the options that you would develop during the interim period? Great.
Thank you, Commissioner Behringer. Do we have a second?
A second. I'll second that motion.
Great. We have a motion, a second? Please vote. Motion is approved 6 to 0. Thank you for that very engaging discussion, folks. Okay. I don't need to read the agreement language since we just continued, we just continued it. Yeah, okay, great. Moving on to the next item. It's a consideration item. It's an annual report to the city council, and the proposed action is to discuss the annual report.
So I think this is something new for the commission. So back in 2013, when the commissions and committees were reorganized, the council asked that each provide an annual report. And from my understanding, that this commission hasn't done that yet. And actually, last year, the time, the date for our annual report, what we did was have our joint meeting on the general plan. And so this would be the first year providing an annual report. And attached to the staff report, I've provided some interesting data, both regarding what the planning commission has accomplished, and some information regarding the volume of applications that are coming into the department, which has increased quite a bit. And so the recommendation is that the commission, I guess, discuss the annual report, provide direction regarding any information that you'd like to see presented to the city council. And actually, the annual reports are typically presented by the commissions, and the chair would primarily give the presentation. So I would... and the chair would primarily give the presentation. So I would volunteer to have staff kind of drop this stuff into a PowerPoint presentation for you, and we can, we can discuss that leading up to the meeting. And tentatively, the City Council has the annual report scheduled for June 13th.
Great. Thank you for that. Commissioner Cooper?
Thanks, Chair. I, you know, for the, for the annual report, I think it would be very interesting for people to understand how many applications you guys processed, how many, how many counter reviews you did, how many applications you actually went through, how many applications you processed during the year comparatively from year to year. Because I know that we're getting busier and busier, but I only see the ones that were actually put in front of us, rather than the ones that you guys handle internally. So...
In terms of administrative functions?
Yeah.
Okay, administrative permits.
Yeah. I think that would be, and then, you know, maybe that there's a value to those permits as well. I'm not sure if there's a value when you, I know that when you file for a permit, you have to put a value down, but maybe you guys keep track of that, of what the value of the permits that you've approved over the year have been. I think the public would find that interesting.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Commissioner Cooper about that. I know what it was like several years ago. We weren't meeting very much at all. I mean, so, but times have changed, and we're meeting regularly now with multiple items. And I think that would be a big star for you guys, for the planning department, to show the increase. And I know you've been shorthanded, too, and everybody knows that. So I think it'd be a big plus, big star, and helpful also as to however you want to categorize them, but I agree. I think it'd be a good idea.
Commissioner Behringer?
Thank you. I felt that this could also be an opportunity for staff and the commission to perhaps share what our vision would be for the future. So I think if you could sort of illustrate the disproportionate workload that this staff seems to have compared to perhaps other jurisdictions, maybe that would be useful. And then I think there could be an opportunity to talk about projects that, for example, we talked about when we were going through our orientation with Commissioner Clifford and myself, that those types of exercises and projects could benefit the city long-term, and they're not moving forward at a, certainly at an expedited face, pace, or at all, due to your staffing constraints. So I think that would be an opportunity to make that case. And if you can quantify it in terms of value of permits and processing, that's great. But I think, you know, there are opportunities in this community for us to take what we have and get caught up in things that have been dragging for a while due to staffing. So I think that'd be a great opportunity to do that. I would definitely support that.
So include basically like the pipeline, not just what?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. I think the, because the pipeline, in my mind, is directly related to staffing levels. And I know you're working to supplement that and to add to that. But I think, you know, don't think, I wouldn't limit my, my thinking just to what we need to stay alive. I think you should have what we need to, you know, to be excellent. And I think there's an opportunity for us to do that. The other thing is, is that Commissioner Clifford and I have attended two meetings in 2016. We would like credit for those, please. Now, it's three after tonight.
Have one more. Commissioner Cooper?
Chair, you know, we had, over the past couple of years, we've talked about some improvements that we'd like to see made within some of the code. I think one that we talked was about the, the parking and lue fee. We wanted that increased. We talked about increasing some of the other fees that we charged for the planning department. And maybe some of those items, we should start to maybe look at. I'm not sure it's necessarily for your report, but I'm, I think that there's some things that we'd like to see changed and done. Maybe we should start keeping a running list of those things.
Yes, that's a really good point.
Now that you have two additional staff, that would be, when they catch up, maybe we can talk about doing some research on those items.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Great. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, I would second looking for a way to talk about the in-lu parking fees and getting them adjusted. They haven't been adjusted since 1986. They're really, really out of date, and we're simply not collecting enough money. And now is a good time for us to be talking about it, because we don't have an applicant in front of us who is, you know, expecting to pay the fees that are, as they are now stated. So it would be a good time for both us and council to look at raising those fees to an appropriate sum. Thank you.
Great suggestion. So you guys are getting a sense of some ideas? Is it being productive?
Yes. So I think, I think I have what I need. I, I'd like to, with the full commissions, okay, work with you directly to kind of firm this up, and get it prepared for the 13th. And I wanted to ask if you guys could check your calendars and plan to be there at the City Council meeting on the 13th?
Do you send invites?
I will.
That'd be great. An Outlook or an Gmail?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so we don't need to take any action on that?
No.
We'll just consider it discussed. Okay, moving on to, let's see, where are we here? Commission Communications. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions for staff. What is the, I know I asked about the hotel last time. I'm going to ask about the 7-Eleven on Hickey. What is the status of that currently?
The applicant is still working through the building permit review process. As recently as today, the applicant's agent was in at the counter speaking with the building official. Staff thinks that they're very close to receiving a building permit. They also have to sort through a couple of issues with the Engineering Division of the Public Works Department with respect to their encroachment permit. They will, of course, have to do some work in the right-of-way, and the traffic control plan that they submitted initially was incomplete. So those are the two major items remaining, but we expect to be able to issue a permit soon, perhaps as soon as a week.
Good. Second one was the status of the burned-out home behind the pastry shop. What is, I guess, what's the steps in that? I know it's, I mean, no longer, you know, rebuildable, but...
Right. The building is red-tagged currently. I believe the address of the site is 1070 Palmetto Avenue. And I've been in contact with representatives of the property owner. They need to obtain an emergency coastal development permit from the planning department prior to issuance of a demolition permit. I've provided them all of the application information, and I'm prepared to answer any questions. I think they're working on the submittal at this point.
Thank you. I was just concerned, just because of its condition, being right there on the cliff, you know, for the ocean's sake.
Of course. As I understand it, some of the delay is attributable, attributable to the insurance company that insured the property. As you can imagine, they were very interested in understanding the circumstances of the incident, given the timing. And so I believe they've sorted out those issues, and they're ready to proceed with the demolition, as soon as we can get the permits in place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Now, I asked this question the last meeting. Has the proponent, proponent of the quarry development provided any sort of traffic analysis with regard to entry-exit at Reyna del Mar Avenue?
No, they haven't.
Any word on that? Any ETA?
Again, I think it was June. I said it was either June or July, but I believe it is June that they are expecting to submit an application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Cooper?
My question already answered. Thank you.
All righty then. I'm not seeing any more lights for Commission, Commissioner Communications. Staff Communications?
So I would just like to introduce our two new planners that are here this evening. So if you guys could stand up. We have Bonnie O'Connor and Rob Smith, who...
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
I'm very happy they're here. Christian and I are very happy they're here.
And we're happy that you're happy.
Looking, looking forward to it.
Great. And is that it for staff communications? Okay. Moving on to the next item, Commissioner Clifford?
I move that we adjourn.
Commissioner Cooper?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you, and good night.